Okay, moving on to our second and final regular agenda item, 3ZN 2021, The Artisan Scottsdale. We first have a staff presentation for Mr. Brian Clough.
Good evening, Chair Higgs and Planning Commissioners. My name is Brian Clough with the city's current planning department, and I'll be giving you an overview of the applicant's request for Artisan Scottsdale 3ZN 2021. The request before you this evening is a recommendation to the City Council regarding the request by owner for a zoning district map amendment, and that's from the central business district with the downtown overlay to the downtown, downtown multiple use type two plan block development downtown overlay, and also downtown, downtown core type one plan block development downtown overlay. This would be for a mixed-use development with eighty-three dwelling units proposed in approximately five thousand square feet of commercial floor area. There's also a development plan associated with the approval, one amended development standards, and your recommendation should be based off of the planned development district criteria. The site we're looking at this evening is on the south side of Scottsdale Road at the intersection of Marshall Way, shown in yellow on the screen. Here's a closer look at the site. You can see on the west side of Marshall, also north of First Avenue, with frontage on Indian School Road. It's currently a vacant site, mostly used for surface parking over the unimproved lot. This is the existing zoning on the site with the C2DO zoning designation. There are some other C2DO in the area, as well as some downtown zone properties. And this is the proposed zoning with the downtown, downtown multiple use type two, along with the downtown core type one with the plan block development and downtown overlay. This is the site relative to the Old Town Character Area Plan land use map. A closer look at the site here, you can see the split designation between the downtown multiple use, as well as the downtown core district. And here is the site relative to the Old Town Character Area Plan development types map. And a closer look, you can see the corresponding boundaries of the type one in the green area to the right, and then the type two in the blue to the left. And the development types within the character area plan designate the intensity that's called for in each of those development types, and there are certain transitions that are required between those development types. Here's a look at the applicant's proposed site plan for the mixed-use development. It consists of two buildings with an underground parking structure. The below-grade garage has three levels below grade, and it does extend across the alleyway that bisects the site. The overall site is about 1.92 gross acres. With the eighty-three dwelling units proposed, that's about forty-three dwelling units an acre. As part of the applicant's proposal, there is what they're calling north, south, north and south public plaza areas identified with number five here and number four here, that the applicant's going to develop as public open space as part of their development. Additionally, I'll note that the first level below grade in the parking structure will include fifty-five public parking spaces. The city is partnering with the developer entering into a contract for those fifty-five public parking spaces to be located in that first level below grade. The five thousand square feet of commercial space is located beneath this building here on the ground floor. And access to the below-grade parking structure is in this area here off of First Avenue. This is the conceptual landscape for the proposed development. On here, I'll note some of the landscaping and sidewalks around the perimeter of the site. The applicant will be constructing new ten-foot-wide sidewalks around all three street frontages, and you can see multiple shade trees that'll be lining those sidewalks and improved hardscape areas and landscaping in those public courtyard areas at the corners. These are the conceptual building elevations for the proposed buildings. On the bottom of the screen is the south elevation, so this would be the darker portion of the elevation fronting on First Avenue. The lighter part is what you would see on the backside of the alley, and then the north elevation here, fronting on Indian School Road. The building height for the southern building comes in right around fifty-two feet, and then the northern building is one story taller at approximately sixty-three feet of height. And then the east and west building elevations shown here, so you can get a better look at the difference between the southern building and the northern building, and that's helping the buildings transition en masse between that type one and type two areas of the site, which have different height requirements. Along with the request, there are not any requested bonus standards for density or building height. It's consistent with the base requirements for the downtown and the plan block development district. However, the applicant is proposing one amended development standard, and that is related to a building location requirement along Marshall Way and First Avenue. So, within the type one and type two areas, there's different building setback requirements, being fourteen feet in type one and twenty feet in type two. And the downtown district actually has a requirement where a certain percentage of your building needs to be at that minimum setback, so it requires the building to be closer to the street. And the curve along Marshall Way, along with that transition between the type one and type two areas, makes that challenging to meet that requirement with the different fourteen and twenty-foot setback requirements. So the applicant is requesting to amend that standard along Marshall Way and First Avenue to be consistent with the site plan proposed with the development plan. And you can see here the setbacks that are currently proposed with that development plan. At the closest is twenty-two feet from the curb on Marshall and twenty on First Avenue. So that would be the amended standard there. The case has gone before the Development Review Board for recommendation. At their January twentieth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, the Development Review Board did forward a recommendation for approval with a vote of five to zero. A quick summary of the neighborhood outreach. The seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot mailings to surrounding property owners were conducted by both staff and the applicant. The applicant also held an open house meeting on February eighth of twenty-twenty-one. We've initially had received two public comments that were included in your packet, and over the last few days, we've received substantially more. I think we've gotten maybe ten to twelve additional over the last couple of days that were in opposition to the request. Those should be on the dais that were provided to you today. Much of the concerns identified had to do with traffic, access points to the site, parking, and specifically impacts to on-street parking, as well as construction impacts to surrounding properties and parking while the development would be under construction. So, as a result of some of the more recent comments, the applicant had been working more with the neighborhood on addressing some of those concerns. So, the applicant is proposing an updated stipulation having to do with the construction management plan. Staff already had included a stipulation for a construction management plan in the packet that you received initially. The applicant's proposing an amendment to that, which is stipulation number twenty. And so, on the screen here, on the top, you can see staff's current stipulation that's in your packet, and then the proposed language that the applicant's looking to amend. And the main difference is that their stipulation is now referring to a specific construction management plan that has been provided to you along with the amended stipulation in that plan. So, staff, staff does agree that the construction impacts associated with the development should be addressed through the zoning process. However, we do have some concerns with the specificity of the plan that's been provided that might be discussion of stipulation this evening. It's not typical that we would stipulate something that specific as zoning. It's something that's more typically worked out through the Development Review Board process and permitting process during construction documents. And there's just so many moving parts and unforeseen circumstances that could happen through that process that may potentially require it to go back to City Council for a more minor issue that wasn't one of the original items that it may have been stipulated for having been a zoning stipulation. So, as you've seen, staff's already included a construction management plan stipulation, but we understand that this may be a situation where more specificity might be necessary. So, as an alternative to the applicant's proposed stipulation, Stafford would recommend maybe amending the stipulation to include more specific detail, yet not stipulate to the specific construction management plan that the applicant provided. And we have started working on some language to that effect if the commission was interested in entertaining those additional details on the stipulation. That concludes staff's presentation at this point. I'll leave it here with a summary of the request again, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have of staff, and the applicant also has a presentation prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clough. Any questions for Mr. Clough before we move on? Yes, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you. Mr. Clough, is it usual that we get these stipulations at such a late date? On a construction project of this size and magnitude?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez, and Planning Commission members, I wouldn't say that it's unusual, but we do try to avoid that, getting the commission as much information as possible upfront in the initial packet. But with, you know, additional neighborhood comment in the applicant trying to work to address some of those issues, sometimes later items occur such as this.
But, okay, so, just so that I'm familiar with this, this traffic mitigation should have been included in the earlier reports, I thought. Or am I not getting it or something?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez, that was a plan that staff didn't receive until late last week, which was after the report had gone out. So my understanding, and the applicant might be able to provide more information, was that this plan was formulated pretty recently, and so staff didn't have the opportunity to provide that in the report. And typically, this type of a plan wouldn't be a requirement of a zoning case, so staff hadn't previously asked for this specific plan, but were relying on the stipulation that was included in the packet to allow time for that to be worked out through the Development Review Board process.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners before we move on to the applicant? Okay, Mr. John Barry?
Chair Higgs, members of the commission, for your record, John Barry, sixty-seven fifty East Camelback Road in Scottsdale. This project, a long vacant parcel at zone commercial, is literally at a critical crossroad on Scottsdale Road and Marshall Way. And today, it is a barrier. It is a barrier for pedestrians and bicyclists when they get to this corner coming from all the activity to the north at the mall and waterfront, and they want to come south. They get to this location, and the question becomes, what's on the other side of that vacant gravel lot there? The curves, you can't really see much down there, so should I go down there or not? It's not a very inviting question to ask. But the artisan will lure people across the street to explore the Scottsdale Arts District, the galleries, the restaurants, the unique shops that are down there. It becomes that lure to get people across the street. And with two public art plazas, it becomes that invitation for people to move into the Scottsdale Arts District and enjoy the amenities that it offers. Now, this is Indian School Road and Marshall, the north building and the south building. And with two public plazas, will achieve at no cost to the taxpayer, maybe I should zoom out, at no cost to the taxpayer, the ability to implement the Emerald Necklace Plan for open space. This has been a long-held goal of the city and its citizens. In fact, our recently adopted general plan highlights the fact that this is something that we should be pursuing, creating public spaces that are linked throughout downtown to advance pedestrian connectivity. Additional city documents and plans note the types of amenities that should be in these little public pocket parks and art plazas. For example, they specifically talk about Marshall Way, helping to establish a stronger link between the northern and southern portions of downtown, this critical crossroad where this vacant lot is today, that's zone commercial for commercial uses. These are the types of amenities that the community has been asking for over the decades in this area. Some images of the types of uses that can go in this, these two open spaces. Indian School Road, at the top of the page, Marshall Way here, First here. These are the two public plazas, one at the corner of Indian School and Marshall Way, the second one at the corner of First and Marshall Way. They will be built at no taxpayer expense, but by the builder. They'll be maintained by the builder, and the builder has a real interest in ensuring that this quality of the public space is maintained, and they will be maintaining it because their regional office for their activities in the valley will be in twenty-five hundred square feet located right here. They are vested in this location and in this building. Now, this will be a transformation of this area, and I've alluded to it. Let's take a look at kind of the before on the left and the after on the right. This is Indian School Road. This is Marshall Way. This is the existing condition. This is what we hope, if this case moves forward, what this can be for the community and for the citizens. This is the second public art plaza that we're discussing. This is Marshall Way. This is First, and this is the portion that would become the public art plaza as well. It's about ten thousand square feet of public, meaningful open space located in this area where there's currently commercially zoned, vacant, gravel-filled parking lot. Now, as staff noted out, we are asking for one amended standard, one amended standard, and it's not to move a building closer to the street. We actually need an amended standard to move the building further away from the street, Marshall Way and First. These two orange-colored portions are areas that could be filled with buildings if we adhere to what's permitted by ordinance. Instead, by asking for this amended standard, we will be building less on the property. This is an area that could go up four stories, which we are not utilizing. Staff mentioned in passing, we're not asking for any bonus height or density. Let's zero in on what we're actually asking for. In terms of building height in that type-two area, the base zoning without asking for any bonus is seventy-two feet in height. We are asking for sixty-four feet in height. Remember, that's the top of mechanical. So we're not asking even to get to the base height, much less any density bonus or height bonus. In that type-one area, the base is fifty-four feet. We're at forty-eight feet. This is not an example of putting twenty pounds in a ten-pound bag under the ordinance. Others may claim that it is for other reasons, but pursuant to the ordinance, not so. In terms of density, again, the base is fifty residences per acre, which would mean ninety-six residences on this property. Instead, as staff pointed, we're at forty-three residences to the acre or eighty-three residential units. You know, traffic is also an issue for folks, and it should be. But in this instance, recall that this is a piece of property that is currently zoned for C2 commercial uses, a wide array of commercial uses in C2 that can go on these vacant properties by right. They never see the Planning Commission. They never see the City Council. It goes straight to Development Review Board, and they have the absolute legal right to develop it. The traffic analysis notes that with those proposed uses that can go with the permitted existing C2 uses, our traffic counts are forty-nine percent less than what could go there under current zoning. Parking has been a major issue in this area as well. Now, you're well aware that the City Council and you modify the downtown parking ordinance to require greater amounts of parking for residential. Not only do we meet, as we must, the downtown ordinance, the revised downtown ordinance, and Madam Chair, it looks like I'm going to need a little bit of additional time, I apologize. But we are providing, we are actually parking this in terms of guest spaces. The required is one guest space for every six residences. We are parking this at one guest space for every two-point-four residences. We are sixteen percent overparked from the already revised standard for residential parking in downtown, and that does not include the fifty-five public parking stalls. Now, talking about those fifty-five public parking stalls, the city came to us and said, you're digging a hole. Would you be willing to go deeper and allow us to put public parking there? Because they've looked all over this area for ways to find public parking to address a critical parking need in this Main Street area for visitors and employees. It's hard to find that dirt. This, they came to us and said, could you dig a little deeper, give us some parking spaces? We said, sure, just cover our costs. And they said, well, we'll do that, and that's about forty thousand dollars of space. This was a year and a half ago. It's a lot more now, and by the time we build it, it will be even more. We asked the city, would you be willing to cover our costs, just our costs because of rising construction costs? They said, no. We said, okay, we're good citizens, and so we are going to, and this is a legal term of art, eat the cost of the additional construction associated with providing those fifty-five public parking spaces. This is implementing a long-sought-after goal of the City Council and folks in this area. Well, then the city came to us and said, you know, I know you're digging this hole, but you know what? We would like the best parking for our citizens. And so, we said, okay, we are do that. So what were going to be two levels of underground parking just for the use of the building became three, with the public parking at the level closest to the grade level. Staff has talked about the construction management plan, and to answer Commissioner Gonzalez's question, that commissioner was on us because they did not get that until last Friday. But that construction management plan was the result of working with and listening and being attentive to residents and businesses in the area. In your package, not in your package, but was submitted to you after the package went out, was this very detailed construction management plan, and I'm not going to go through it. I'm not sure that the commission wants to go through the details of this. It's been distributed. I know folks have looked at it. And part of the rationale for the revisions to the, it's broken into three phases. We don't lose any on-street parking during the course of this. But part of the reason that we got into the specificity is because that's what the businesses in the area wanted. Now, are we missing things in here because we haven't had staff review this? Yes, we are. I'm positive we are. I'm sure we are. So what we would like to do is, rather than go through a specific stipulation tonight, is allow us to work with the staff, give them time to vet this. We will continue to work with the businesses in the area. And then before this goes to City Council, we will hopefully have staff's input. We'll be able to discuss it with the area businesses and come up with something a little bit more specificity than staff would like. We understand why they don't like the specificity, but we have worked hard with the businesses in the area, and we very clearly understand what their concerns are, and they're valid. And we want to continue to listen to them and address them clearly and make them enforceable. As you know, community benefits, and this will be my conclusion, Chair and Commission members, list of partial list of community benefits. We're going to transform that barrier to pedestrian movement between the north and the south portions of the Arts District with these two public art plazas. We're only asking for the single amended standard to move the building away from Marshall Way. This will be about a thirty-four million dollar reinvestment in this area. We generate less traffic than permitted under the current zoning. We'll create a twenty-five percent open space and implement this long-sought Emerald Necklace Pocket Park with public art in it at two locations on this property, two locations at no cost to the taxpayer. We'll install new ten-foot sidewalks for enhanced pedestrian comfort. Staff notes that this plan implements the city's sensitive design principles and urban design and architectural guidelines. No request for additional bonus height or density. In fact, we're not even getting to the point where it's close to what the base is. We're less than the base, both on height and density. We'll be contributing to public art, which will be used in those public art plazas. We exceed the parking requirements by sixteen percent. We have many more guest parking spaces than required, and that's because we listen to the businesses in the area or trying to do everything we can to ensure that those on-street parking spaces and the public parking spaces are available for others than those who will be utilizing this building. Public parking, this points out that there are fifty-five of them. They're paying forty thousand dollars a space based on cost a year and a half ago. Last year, the cost was about forty-eight thousand dollars a space. And by the way, this doesn't include the cost of the land. The city would have to go find some place to build this parking and pay for the land, unless they already own the land. So those costs are increasing by us subsidizing that cost of parking. It's about a four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar benefit to the taxpayers of the city. This is, to my knowledge, and I think we're the ones that are pioneering this, the first time we have actually, in a zoning case itself, stipulated a construction management plan to listen to the business, area businesses, and to assist them to the extent we can. There are enhanced property tax benefits for Scottsdale schools when you invest thirty-four million dollars on this property. We reduce the urban heat island effect by adding trees to the area. We've agreed to do forty-eight-inch box trees. The existing number of shade trees around the perimeter of this site is thirteen. We're proposing twenty-seven shade trees when we're done. Short-term rentals are prohibited by the lease. Short-term rentals are prohibited by the leases. We're stipulated to commence construction within three years. We utilize the International Green Construction Code for sustainability. We certainly enhance our identity as an arts community with these public art plazas. The regional office for the builder and owner is on the ground floor, onsite, ensuring that this is going to be maintained and done well. We create meaningful old-town public open space. There is a staff recommendation for approval, and the DRB recommended unanimous approval. Chair, members of the commission, I'm happy to answer any questions at this point or wait until after public testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. I'll kick it off with two questions. One, I think it's, you know, fantastic what you're doing in terms of helping to address the need of parking, especially in that part of the city with the fifty-five public parking spaces. But as you know, the requirements for parking spots per resident is maybe a little bit outdated in the city, and sometimes there may be extra cars that residents may need to find a home for. Will there be anything to be done to mitigate having the overflow of those extra cars being in the public parking, thus taking away from true public parking?
Chair, members of the commission, we are, obviously, we're very sensitive to that. We've heard that from folks in the area for years. Now, keep in mind that much of that parking concern was addressed with the updated parking ordinance, which required for the first time that we provide specific visitor parking spaces at one to six. We are now at one visitor parking space for every two-point-four residences, much different than the ordinance required one parking space for every six residences. So, we simply provided more parking for the folks that will be using the building. So we hope that helps to address it. The other thing we've done, and I think it's at a great cost to my client, but again, we've tried to listen, and these are some of the small things that are expensive, but really pay attention in listening to the businesses in the area. There will be separate elevator cores and separate stairwells for the public parking and the private parking. So if you want to park in the public parking and get into the building, So if you want to park in the public parking and get into the building, you can't. So that you lose the convenience factor. So again, we've tried to engineer and plan at additional cost. You have to have another elevator core, additional stairwells, those types of things. So the short answer is we've tried to anticipate that and do everything that we could to address that type of issue.
Yes, that's right. Thank you for the reminder of the, of the separate entrances. Well, I should say elevators and stairwells. That, that's, that's, that is, that is one way to hopefully help them to get that. My other question is, and, and I think I asked this initially when reviewing the case, that entrance on, on First Avenue. And I know since having seen feedback from local businesses having a concern with the entrance being there, can you help us to understand why that is the most ideal spot for the entrance to be placed? And is, is Marshall Way not even an option?
Chair Higgs, members of the commission. I am not a traffic engineer. I did, however, spend the night of the holiday in Express. So I'm not a traffic engineer. Ours is here. And, you know, Ms. Blakeman with Lokahe, I think is a highly regarded traffic engineer and as is her staff. And we initially submitted a site plan that did not have access onto First. That's what we submitted to city staff. And the city staff came back and their, and the transportation staff came back with these comments about that. And we can take the time to read it, but it says, please revise the site plan to relocate the parking structure entrance so that it has access from First Avenue instead of the alley, which is where we showed it. The alley entrance on Marshall Way is too close to Indian School Road and may get blocked by queued vehicles, meaning vehicles that are waiting. In addition, waiting to get through the intersection. In addition to conflicts at the Marshall Way Drive, the existing configuration, meaning using the alley and Marshall Way, will be difficult for vehicles to make a U-turn into the parking structure entrance if entering from First Avenue. The proposed design also creates a conflict of vehicle exiting the parking structure and vehicles on the one-way surface drive. Now, that's a very long technical way of saying that's about as strong as a transportation department does. They said please up there, and the first word was please. There was no please about this. It was, this makes no sense from a traffic engineering perspective. Now, we felt strongly, like some of these other folks, that we really wanted that access. They're not on First Avenue. So being stubborn, this would be me, not our traffic engineer, but being stubborn, we resubmitted the plan and ignored that comment. And we said, we really want to have it on Marshall Way. We appreciate what you're saying. We appreciate your traffic analysis. We appreciate your professional opinion on this, and you've got a ton of it. But we really think this works better for us. Well, there was no please with the second review comments by transportation staff. But most importantly, when the meeting occurred and I was not there, which is probably why things got done. The second meeting or a meeting with transportation staff that included transportation staff and our traffic engineer, they articulated, staff articulated these in person to our traffic engineer, who could translate for the stubborn lawyer. And she basically came back, and these are my words, not hers. She basically came back and said, you know, we're city staff and we all try and work together to come up with creative ways to, to address issues and make sure that traffic works well. But staff is absolutely right on this one. It makes no engineering sense, safety sense, traffic sense to do this. And our traffic engineer, not being a paid shill, but being a, me, but being a professional civil or engineer who has to protect her, her stamp when she stamps something. She said, transportation staff is exactly right. It doesn't make any sense to do that. So at that point, we acquiesced in spite of what we knew the concerns were. We acquiesced and, and here we are. With our professional traffic engineer and the city's professionals saying, it doesn't make sense. That was a long answer.
There's not a chance.
There's not a chance.
Okay. No, that was, that was a very helpful explanation. Thank you so much. With that, I'll move on to other commissioners with questions. Commissioner Otte.
Thank you. The, the developer is going to put an office in this property. Is that what you said?
Let me just put this back up. Thank you. Chair, Commissioner Otte, yes, again, let me show you that this is Indian School Road, Marshall Way, a north building, south building. There's five thousand square feet of non-residential use on the ground floor here. At least twenty five hundred square feet of that space will be a regional office for my client.
A regional office. Okay. What, do you know what sort of business they're going to be doing out of that?
They are builders and they're real estate builders and developers. Yeah. And they have projects and activities around the state.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. For Mr. Curtis. Is there, if I ask Mr. Curtis a question? Do you remember historically why that Marshall Road has taken that bend that way? You know, going, going south of Indian School? Why that was created like that? Because almost every street runs an east-west or north-south pattern? And why that, that, that particular plot was, was designed like that? Or why that roadway was constructed like that?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Chris Gonzalez, I'm sorry, that was, that predates me, so I don't have any memory of that.
Chair Higgs and Commissioner Gonzalez, being the jolly dinosaur here.
One of them.
I would also note that Jerry Stably is here, who was introduced earlier, who was a former staff member, who was very active in the successful evolution and transition of downtown and shares a great, should share a great deal of the pride over what's happened since he started working on downtown. I can, I can, maybe it's easier if I show you on here, if you don't mind, if I could switch to the Elmo. So Commissioner, originally Marshall Way went straight up like this.
Correct.
And back in the day, which in the nineties is my recollection, Mr. Stably, back in the nineties, there was an effort to look ahead and have some vision to say, you know, we want to create a strong pedestrian connection between the mall and the northern parts of the downtown, then downtown, now Old Town and the arts district, the galleries, the restaurants, the unique shops, the great jewelers in the area. We wanted to create that pedestrian connection. Otherwise, if you're coming down Marshall Way and we didn't, and the city didn't do that, you would stop here and Marshall Way would have been right here. You can see the remnant of the street here. So that was why. Now, unfortunately, what happened about the same time is the existing retail buildings that were on this property were all demolished. And so this resulted in these remnant city-owned properties right here when it was realigned. So were you just testing somebody, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Well, I guess maybe the reason why I was testing myself, actually, seeing if I could recollect anything. Was there ever a particular time where, you know, how the dog leg ends right there at First Street? Or I mean, First Avenue, how that kicks out like that? That piece that your, your owners have? Would there be any, you know, you have that now as like public open space or, or whatever, whatever you want to call it now, or what you're going to dedicate it out? Have you ever thought of maybe just dedicating that back to the city? Letting them do their, letting them do it, taking some sort of bonus for that and allowing the city to continue that street? Or just abandon that little dog section there at the, at the intersection there below there on the south end there?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm not sure I understand it without, I'm visual. So without being able to, to better understand it. The city currently owns this kind of the lighter color right here.
Right.
They own that and they own this.
Right. So the secondary, the first one that you pointed out, the southernmost dog way that gets kicked out right there? Yes, sir. That?
Yeah.
Would there be any way of maybe you and the owner and the city getting together? And maybe rededicating that property out to maybe making, straightening out that street and so that you don't have that congestion problem at the bottom? Would that be something that would, could be maybe worked out?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez. It's, I, I don't think anybody's thought of it. Doesn't mean it's a bad idea. No one's thought of it. Initial reaction is this would result in an offset intersection here. It would also result in all this traffic, including the lights and the turning movements and everything else being aligned with, between these built, existing buildings right here. And I can't speak for Mr. Erickson, but I don't know whether that's a net positive for these folks in this area to have offset intersections here. I don't know if city staff would want to comment on.
Or maybe, is it possible? And I mean, I'm just bringing up theories because it's such an, it's such an odd thing, the way that street was done. And maybe could they abandon that street? Is that a possibility?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez, that one's not up to me. What I will tell you is if this case does not move forward, this property will get built on with or without the city's right-of-way being used as a public open space and art parks and fulfilling the general plan and fulfilling the vision of Emerald Necklaces for the public. If we leave the street the way it is, I think the traffic engineers at the city would want to, or would say that that's a safer intersection. But I'm, again, I'm not a traffic engineer. And the other piece of it is what we'd like to do is to fulfill that vision for the, for the city. Create those two public art plazas. We maintain it and we, it, it becomes, it's on the city's tax rolls. So that's a, that's a visionary thought. We haven't even considered it. But I, it may be a little late in the process to go back and rewind and start over.
Put it out there, but you know, if, if it comes to the, if it comes to, let's say, maybe a vote tonight or something like that. If, if the ownership might be willing to consider it or work with the city, would that help?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez would, would have to consider that if that became an option that the commission wanted to, to recommend to the council.
That's, that's basically what I was asking. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from commissioners before we move to public comment? Okay. We do have, let's see. Technically, six cards here and then one person on the phone. I think we, do we still have that person requesting to speak on the phone, Mr. Curtis?
No, thank you for asking, Chair Higgs. That person couldn't stay on any longer. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. So with that, then we'll move to those that are in person. We have Mr. Bob Pedgman and then it looks like Mr. Mike Crook and Crocker is donating his time to you as well to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Bob Pedgman. Address is on the record and I think Chair Higgs said that there was a petition of in support and then there are emails in opposition. I just, I just want to be clear that I am not in opposition. You can be in support and still try to improve the project. So the project itself has an absolutely great design. You know, Sawback is the architect, you know, Museum Square, I've worked with Jeff Danzack. And it's a very good-looking project. The concern is primarily construction effect and adverse effect, right? On the, on the neighboring businesses because this, this particular project doesn't have really a staging area. It's stuck between Indian School, Marshall and First. Many of you are familiar with the, with the gravel lot that's being used right now for parking. That's what, that's what it is. So if you think that the construction concerns are overrated, overblown, just go to the hundred and twenty-some unit Scottsdale Residences project that's right behind Prestige Cleaners on Main Street between Goldwater and Valley Ho. For almost a year, you cannot park on that street. And that's probably going to go on for another year, so two years. You can't park on the street and the construction vehicles park on the surrounding streets for two years. That's an unacceptable situation. If that happens on First Avenue, which will trickle down cars to Main Street, that is an absolute disaster. It will cause massive loss of business for the hundred-and-so merchants. So that's where I'm coming from. Now, there is a construction mitigation plan. And I just want to put some highlights of this plan on here. Okay. So phase one, six months. In the mitigation plan, it says that the south part of the parcel can be used for public parking. So that, you know, employees, their guests, visitors can park there. While the north part, part of the parcel can be used to store the, the trailer and the construction equipment. Phase two, four months. The very north part of the parcel is going to be used to store the crane and other construction vehicles. If this wasn't the case, they'd be parking on Marshall and closing the street, by the way. Phase three, fourteen months. Once the three-level parking garage is built, what a novel idea to have all of these construction vehicles park in the actual garage of the building while they work on the top sections. I mean, this is such common sense that frankly, if you don't put this in, either there is no proper thinking or there's a plan to put the merchants out of business. And that, that, those are the two, you know, obvious conclusions. There's, I don't think there's any in-between. Now, I hear this thing that, you know, it's not a requirement to have a construction mitigation plan or it's not within the purview of the commission to, 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 to vote on that. That is absolute nonsense because I'll tell you why. I'm not trying to be nasty. Museum Square had these provisions in it. They didn't call it the construction mitigation plan, but it was built in. For example, parcel Aegis built, the construction vehicles are put on, on the other parcel. At some point, there was a plan in, 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 in the, in the development plan to get, to actually demolish the, the library and use that as a hundred and thirty lot place for parking. What I'm saying is that you can easily build all of this stuff into the phases of the project. Just look at the Museum Square development plan. I read line by line. And it was all in there with the phases and how it's going to be done. So there's no, there's no reason why all of this cannot be incorporated into the development agreement. And when I'm talking about the development agreement, I'm not talking about stipulation number twenty pointing to an email that was sent by John Barry to, to staff. It has to be in the development agreement that goes to the council. That's the only way. That's going to be accountable. It's going to be legally binding and whatever. So that's the piece with that. Another issue that I picked up is that, let me put this on. Well, John's saying that this is twenty percent overparked, and I don't want to argue with John, but based on the old code, that's correct. Based on the new code, and it's on the second or third page, there are hundred and forty-four spaces required, a hundred fifty-one are, are provided. It's, it's over by seven. However, there are thirty, thirty-two tandem parking spaces, sixteen per level. So when you look at the whole tandem parking concept, unless they're under the same ownership or occupancy, it is the biggest pain in the ass and will create a lot of obstacles. Pointing to the, to the actual parking ordinance that's in place right now, it says tandem parking, the zoning administrator may administratively approve tandem parking in the, in downtown for residential units under the same ownership. Now, ownership means that they're in the same unit, so that one can get out of the way of the other. That's really the intent and the spirit of this clause. You have sixteen two-bedrooms. If you can make a stipulation to say that those sixteen two-bedrooms will be using those, you know, a pairs of tandem spaces, that will solve that problem. There's a little caveat though, because every two-bedroom now requires one point seven. I don't know how that's administratively, administratively possible. But that's the case. And the concern again is that if they, if those spaces are being avoided, there'd be overflow to the parking, to the public parking space. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, for in-person. Next for in person request to speak is Mr. Jimmy Erickson. And Mr. Erickson, just a reminder, you have three minutes to speak and please first state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Jimmy Erickson. I live at seventy forty-one East First Avenue. Right across the street from this project. I'm not happy with this at all. I just found out a few days ago that they were going to put an entrance to the project on First Avenue. And that's a disaster for my business and for the other businesses there. I've had my business, which is a custom order jewelry business in downtown Scottsdale for thirty-nine years. I've been in this business this April. I will be here for twenty-six years. When I bought the property, the city of Scottsdale gave me permission to build a house on the property, which I did. And we built the house and we moved in in two thousand eight. So I've been there for fourteen years. Now, the building was made of adobe bricks built in nineteen forty-eight. And there are several properties there beside myself. I have Jim Sutel as a tenant. I have salons there and we love that property. That's our place. Now, we're talking about building a. Five-story building across. So that means when I walk out the door in the morning, I get to look at a five-story building. Not quite what I had in mind to have happen. I don't plan on retiring soon. I plan on working for a long time. Most of my clients are between sixty and seventy years old. They're ladies. They live in Paradise Valley, North Scottsdale. They drive to me and I get to repair their jewelry, which I love. I build new jewelry for them. And I work really hard at it and but the people that come to me have a car. They they don't go by Uber. They don't go by bus. They don't go by walking. So the problem is if you create more traffic on First Avenue, I got even a bigger problem because where are my clients going to park? If they drive around the block three times and they can't find a parking spot, they're gone. And then I lost another job for the day. I don't want to do that. I love my clients. I'm happy they're coming into our shop. I'm happy they're working. To me, it's let me build their product. However, if they can't find a place to park, that's a big problem. When I bought the property, the landlord told me this is the least busy street in all of Scott downtown Scottsdale. Great. But that's not true. Lately, there are so many cars parking on First Avenue. That we can hardly find a place to park for the clients, except I have one place on the property that a client can park. But that's not always available because sometimes somebody else who didn't come into my shop is parked there. Now, I called the police. By the time the police get there, they're gone. So it's a big, big problem. I'm not happy about that. I think there's a lot of things can be changed. That this curve on Marshall Way, I was there when that happened. That happened because they were trying to get people walking from. Upper the where the other galleries were to Main Street and that that never happened. I've lived there all these years and I know people don't walk. This is not a walking town. This is a driving town. So it's a hard thing to do because it just doesn't work. But I'm I think that the area has to be changed. The entrance for off of First Avenue, that's going to be a disaster for us. That corner property that belonged to the city, there was a building there before that got tore down. The city condemned it and tore it down. It was three businesses on the on the bottom floor and three apartments above. Make the entrance there. That's a much better place for the entrance to be. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Next, we have, I believe it's Mr. French Thompson. Please state your name and address and you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is French Thompson. My business address is seventy-one forty-eight. East Main Street and I've been in my location for twenty-five years. I thought I'd tell you that I don't kid myself. I know downtown is going to get built. It's zoned for four stories right where my single story building is. Another fifteen or twenty years, there's probably going to be a four-story building right where my single story building is. That's the reality. This parcel here has just been dirt for so long. It's just, you know, it's just a parking lot. And it's going to get built. People that own the property, they've been wanting to do it for a long time. I've seen some really terrible design ideas for this. One of the ones which is really great, by the way, where the horseshoe park is. He wanted to have both pieces of that property and he put a bridge over that so that you can have parking up on the roof of the building. It was still going to be entrance off of First Avenue. I don't kid myself. We're going to have problems with the parking no matter what happens. You know, people have cars. They do, you know, as Jimmy said, people don't walk. I think that that will help us. Bring more people down from the north. The Kimsey's being built over there. That's going to be a huge piece of property. A lot of people live in there. Museum Square is going to be built. There's going to be a lot of people there. A lot of those people will be walking around. I don't know what's going to happen with the parking, you know, down there. I know that we're going to have problems with it no matter what happens. The one thing I'd really like to see. In any future development that happens in the Old Town area. Is a construction mitigation plan that's being put together like this one has. I was consulted a couple of times with this and I looked at it, made some suggestions and they listened to us. This is the kind of thing that can put us out of business when construction happens. As commissioners, I don't know if you're aware of it, but when the Prada del Sol grows down Scottsdale Road, I'm out of business for a day. When the Center for the Arts has a event over the Center for the Arts, I'm out of business for the day. Anytime there's major construction on the streets, I'm out of business. I mean, I'm paying rent year round. I'm paying insurance. I'm paying employees. I'm doing all that kind of stuff. I'm part of what downtown is all about. Same as Jimmy Erickson. He's he's one of the stars of the neighborhood. He's got very real concerns about that. I don't know what can be done with all that stuff, but I'd like to be able to see any of these developments going on in the future that I know are going to happen. Have those kind of construction parking mitigation plans included as a requirement. For every one of them. So. I endorse this because I've sent really bad plans for this same property. I think this is a really good looking. Welcome thought out. Project, so. Can't do anything about parking, but I'd like to be able to see something good come in in instead of some of these bad things. And I'll just use an example. I think that Marquee, which has been approved. And it's going to happen is probably one of the worst things that ever happened to downtown and that was approved. So if something that bad gets approved, something this good doesn't, I would just be really sad. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I have two remaining speaker cards here, but I I do see that one of them is for Mr. Mike Crooker who did. I just want to confirm donate your time to. Bob Pedgeman. Sure. Yes, okay, all set. Great. So then the final speaker we have. For this evening is Mr. David Michael Miller. Please state your name and address and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Michael Miller. I own the business property at seven zero three four East First Avenue. This project is going to wrap around my building. I'm. Looking at it out the back of my building and I'm looking at it to my east. I'm just going to read my notes. It's easiest. I own a property at seven zero three four East First Avenue, a building that I built. In nineteen ninety-nine to house my interior design business. I've enjoyed it being in this location for twenty-two years. My building was designed by Arizona architect Wendell Burnett, a protege of Will Bruder. Wendell has become a globally recognized architect for his work and we are oftentimes approached by visitors from all over the world to see my building. My building by Wendell is considered to be a significant architectural landmark within Old Town. When the building was first conceived and designed in nineteen ninety-eight, the city of Scottsdale Planning Department envisioned First Avenue as being the Garden Street. A pedestrian friendly street foliated with trees and charming in nature. My building was designed within those parameters and we conformed our design. To the height restrictions provided to us by the city of Scottsdale. Although I recognize that the vacant adjacent property would be developed, I never imagined. Eventually, a five-story building would be designed to wrap around both my east and north exposures. The new project not only dwarfs my building, but it dwarfs the entire street as well. I'm just going to put this. So in this elevation view, I'm stripping in my office building against the backdrop of Artisan. I'm the second tallest building on the street. Most buildings on the street are single story.
Are you able to zoom in a little bit on that? That helps a little. Thank you.
Oh. I was going to say I'm not. So I put this up just because it shows how. Dramatically out of scale the artisan is relative to the street. I get the density thing that the city is trying to do. But First Avenue is going to be a completely different place after Artisan happens. And. I'm going to go back to my my street and my my notes. First Avenue is already a bustling street with a variety of restaurants and small boutique shops. Traffic on this street is often quite busy. And the street parking is consistently full. With the addition of the Artisan project, what is now an empty parking lot. Beside and behind my building will become a five-story building, leaving patrons at the Coach House, Arcadia Farms and local shops. To fend for themselves on parking. I believe that the scale of the artisan building is completely inappropriate to the site. And will irrevocably change the character of First Avenue. The artistic and visual experience of my building are going to be significantly degraded by the Artisan project. And I'm deeply disappointed in this development direction that the city is going. When this first pro- when this project was first presented to me, I was assured that the entire street was in favor of the development. Which turned out to be blatantly inaccurate. And I visited all the people on the street after the fact to verify that. And I believe you guys have gotten comments in in writing from neighbors on the street. So I don't want to stand the way of progress, but. I just feel like in my particular case, I'm just I'm bearing the brunt of. The inbound and outbound traffic directly next to my driveway. My clients are going to come and they're going to be waiting in line to get into my park my parking lot. While Artisan is backed up dealing with their parking.
Mr. Miller, you are at your time. So if you could just wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's just another image. It just I mean, it just illustrates the scale of what we're talking about. Right now, my building is the tallest building on the street. And it is it is dwarfed by this scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to that is that is if I should say for public comment in person here, applicant like to respond to anything?
Chair Higgs, members of the of the commission. Appreciate Mr. Pedgeman and Mr. Thompson's comments. Just to want to clarify with Mr. Pedgeman that the construction mitigation plan belongs, I think you'd been saying in the development plan. When you were up here, you were saying the development agreement. So I just wanted to clarify that he acknowledges it's the development plan, not the development agreement. When it comes to the tandem parking, we're certainly willing to. Acknowledge that that's where the tandem parking has to go, but actually that is a requirement of the parking code and. There's actually another provision in the parking code besides the one that. Mr. Pedgeman pointed out to you that would require that those have to be allocated to the same dwelling units. I'm not sure we need the belt and suspender, but if if that's what we need to do, that's great. Again, this is the parking code. I'm going to see if I can zoom in here. And you'll see highlighted in green in the parking code. Again, it says residential parking space may be provided on two parkings. In in a two parking space tandem configuration if if the tandem spaces are allocated to the same residential dwelling. So is that solvent for you, Mr. Pedgeman? Yep, yep. So just wanted to make sure that that is the parking code requirement. It has to be allocated to the same dwelling. You know, I think for obvious reasons. When when you've got a tandem parking spot. The. Comment from Mr. Erickson. Thank you, sir. Your reputation. I mean, David Michael Miller, I mean Jimmy, I grew up here, moved here when I was two and a half. Your names are legendary. David, you've worked with my clients. You've worked with great friends. And your building is absolutely spectacular. It's a great combination between yours' reputation and your architect's. It's spectacular. The and Mr. Erickson, I understand the concern about losing on-street parking or that potential. From what you said in your comments and in your correspondence, it sounds like that's already occurred without anything happening on this on this piece of property. And that's frustrating for you, I would imagine very much so. We're trying to help with that. I think everybody recognizes that and the speakers did that this vacant land is going to be. Redeveloped. Something's going to get built there. And it could be a one-story, it could be two or three one-story restaurants. But it generate lots of traffic and employees. It could be a couple of office buildings with underground parking. That have the absolute right to take their underground parking out to First Avenue. Because today there are already two existing driveways on First Avenue off of this property. So parking is going to go away on that on those parcels because they're privately owned and somebody's going to do something. The issue is, will they do it by going to DRB and building three stories plus mechanical and underground parking and all or restaurants, whatever it might be? Or are we going to do it together and create something that is as good as we can, given the situation that we're in? And we've always tried to work to make something better as Mr. Pedgeman said. There's nothing wrong with keep keeping to work on projects and make them even better. And I appreciated Mr. Thompson's comments as well, where he acknowledged that something's going to happen here. And this is a really good plan as well. Appreciate the comments about construction mitigation and. We recognize that this is a serious issue for these business owners and we don't want to be the reason that people like. Jimmy Erickson or David Michael Miller or French or Bob, you know, lose business or or have. Negative impacts on their on their businesses. So we want to be a positive impact on the neighborhood and on their businesses. Chair Higgs, members of the commission, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Do we have any remaining questions for Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, I think I I so I appreciate the concern on the the parking construction mitigation. I think if, right, you've been. Following things that have been happening with the city, especially as it pertains to the art galleries and shutting down streets and and trying to. Work with the livelihood of some of the people down there. So I can appreciate where they're coming from. Would it be possible? I think we've already kind of covered it, but just to make sure we're we're clear, I'd be willing to. I'd love to support the project as long as we can include. That there will be some sort of construction mitigation attached to this as before it goes to council. Is that? Is that correct, Mr. Curtis? Is that going to take place now? Or can we get that to take place?
So I'm Chair and Commissioner. Serena, so we already have a stipulation in there that talks about that. Looks like we've got some a lot of work already started, the applicant team with the surrounding merchants, and I think. That's one thing that we can continue working on. We want to make sure that. We handle the construction mitigation where we address the the key issues, but. We all know when this gets built, maybe hopefully before three years comes around. That there is some flexibility with addressing some unknown factors that may occur during. During construction, there's a lot of variables between now and when there'll be construction. And one thing that we probably want to avoid for everybody is something that's so strict where if there needs to be some flexibility. We'd have to come back to the Planning Commission and City Council when they're right in the middle of construction. So. That's one of the reasons why the closer that we get to the actual construction that we finalize the plan at a staff level, but. We understand that the the merchants are looking for some sort of. Confirmation and I guess some reliability that their 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 businesses will be protected as much as possible. So in short, I think we're all here willing to continue working with. A mitigation plan before we get to council and put something together to give more reliability than what we normally have. So yes, thank you.
Great. If we have a if we have, as we have more projects like this coming into the downtown, I think it would be. A huge help for the planning commission. A lot of the comments that we received. Before the meeting, there was very little just direct opposition to it. A lot of people, especially for a downtown project of apartments. You know, versus some of the other projects that we've had was very little to, I don't want this project, you know, don't build that. It was a lot around the construction and the mitigation of of traffic as it pertains to how that looks with the construction. So. Just moving forward, if we could have maybe a little more detail around that before, you know, early on, so we don't get this late rush. Of issues. And I know it's an evolving thing now in the downtown. I know it's not. And I know it's an evolving thing now in the downtown. I know it's not required, but I think that'd be a huge help for me moving forward. So with that, I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief. But again, I, I do think the architect's great. Swaback, thank you. Great job, as always. And I'll definitely be supporting the project and would love to make a motion if we don't have a whole lot of other comments.
I know we have, we have two remaining. Thank you so much. Two, two remaining comments. It looks like our questions. First with Commissioner Graham.
Chair Higgs, thank you very much. I agree with Commissioner Serena about this is becoming maybe something that we should become more precedent. Well, it's unprecedented that I'm, from what I'm aware of, as far as this construction mitigation plan. I wanted to take a, just a quick, I'll be very brief because I know that the hour is getting late and there's no reason to belabor this. The, I think this is setting a new standard as far as construction mitigation. And I think that that's important for this part of our city because this is a, the situation is unique because this location is unique. There's nowhere else like this in our city. This is a prized part of our city. And as we've seen from so many of the emails and from many of the public comments that we've heard, if the construction goes sideways, it can be, it can have an extremely deleterious effect on the merchants that have been there for so many decades. I, I, I feel for, for Jimmy Erickson and his concerns about the unknowns, what can happen with construction. And, but there seems to be an appropriate amount of response to that as far as what the applicant is doing in the context of, of, of making this the best possible project during the construction, during its development. So I appreciate all that and I appreciate all the professionalism and all the great work that's going in on, going into this. As French said, you know, something's going to happen here and this seems to be a pretty desirous project for that particular spot. I'm a big fan, as you know, Mr. Berry, of, of parking, particularly the public parking. So I'm very pleased about the public parking. I mean, what the applicant is doing as far as creating public park and not, not even accepting the full cost of reimbursement. Quick question, the, the tandem parking, that's for the lower two levels. There's no tandem parking, just for the record, for public record, on, on the public parking level.
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Graham, short answer to that is you're absolutely correct. There cannot be any tandem parking in the public level. And one other quick follow-up to Commissioner Serena's comments, I just want to make it clear on the record that staff was not the reason that we did not get this final version of this construction mitigation plan. It's not final. It's gonna continue to be in flux as we work with staff and the businesses. But we were responsible for not getting it to them until this past Friday. And in fact, they've been very accommodating and recognized the need for this. Thank you.
So if I can wrap my comments up, thank you, Mr. Berry. If I can wrap my comments. Chair Higgs. If the construction isn't done right, or if it goes sideways, it can, it can be devastating to our prized downtown. And I think that everybody knows that and recognizes that, recognizes that. Mr. Curtis, my question to you is, you know, you talk about flexibility because we don't know how, you know, every, every plan never goes as planned. And so we have flexibility, but do we have, do we have equally compensating safeguards if things don't go to plan? And it creates a negative effect, what can we do as a commission to, can we add something to the development agreement? As far as construction mitigation is, what, without being over, without over, being overbearing?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Graham, the, you mentioned the development agreement versus the development plan. So as a commission, the commission sees a development plan with a rezoning case, but not the development agreement. That's straight.
That was, that was, I misspoke.
So again, with a development plan, that is stipulated. And if there are significant changes to a development plan, that may include a construction mitigation plan, then arguably that would have to go back to the planning commission and back to city council to amend that construction mitigation plan. So we're looking for something that, and we'll continue working together as we always do, but it's usually further down the road during final plans and, and prior, and pre-construction. But continue working with that because there are a lot of variables, as we all know. Day-to-day during construction, things happen. There's crews out there that need quick action by staff in terms of addressing issues. So we want, that's what I mean about flexibility. We don't want to necessarily stop a project in construction because there's some sort of strict interpretation of what the, the plan that was created three years previously. And, and now we're delaying the construction and crews aren't working and so on and so forth. There's just so many variables. There could be other construction at the same time that we aren't foreseeing that's across the street or we're down the block, or we may be doing a sewer line somewhere. So we just have to be real careful. The closer you get to the construction, the more in focus everything is and you know what's going on. This is going to be underground. There's going to be a dig. There's going to be haul routes and so on and so forth. So a five-play, a five-page plan in 2022, and if this gets built in 2025, may not make as much sense in 2025 or however long this takes. So I think the emphasis that we're all hearing tonight is the earlier we have the communication and the concerns from the merchants and the more we could lock in some expectations, knowing that there may be some deviation for flexibility. But it's always the intent of the city to, to balance everybody's needs, to make sure things get built in a timely manner as well as we protect the existing merchants downtown. So those are some of the challenges that we'll have to work through over the next week or so. And knowing that the tighter this is, the more challenges we might have on the development standpoint. The city could simply just enforce whatever it is that's agreed to. And so I think it, it needs to be well thought out. And this is a great start. And the commitment that we'll continue working with it will go a long way. And maybe this does set forth a model in the future where we get more, at least draft mitigation plans at the preliminary level at zoning. Thank you.
Mr. Berry, would your client approve or disapprove the embedding a developer's mitigation plan embedded in the developer, development plan before it goes to city council?
Chair Higgs and members of the commission, Commissioner Graham, the short answer to that is yes. No, that, that's an answer we've given both to staff and to the, some of the area businesses and their representatives. I think we did that on Monday afternoon, submitted an email to staff with, and we copied some of the business leaders in the area saying that as the applicant, we were requesting a construction mitigation plan be included in the development plan itself. And also suggestions and modified stipulation language. I think Commissioner Serena, you know, the idea of a requirement that we have a construction mitigation plan that we've worked through with staff in consultation with the area businesses and that that be part of the council's consideration when it goes to council gives us time to get staff's input on what their concerns are, balance this idea of flexibility while still keeping the faith with the, with the community.
Chair Higgs, at this point, I don't have any more comments or question. I think that that, if we, if the commission moved forward with that addition, I think that'd be very satisfactory. Thank you very much for allowing me the time.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Artel, you had something?
Yes, thank you. I had a little trouble following the, the mitigation plan that, that the developer has put together. And there was a, a list of steps, requirements that Mr. Pejman had put up. I looked at what Mr. Pejman had. I, I tried to find that in what I got from Mr. Berry. I couldn't quite tie it out, but I think that's just because I wasn't fast enough. Mr. Pejman, are you, you're confident that those are in there? Okay, okay. Thank you. You know, I, I guess I would be thurding because Mr. or Commissioner Graham has seconded what Commissioner Serena has said about having the construction mitigation plan. Yeah, we should always have that in there. Years ago, I read that World War I Field Marshal Von Muckey said, "No plan survives contact with the enemy." And I found that to be true in business. I used that in business until my boss once said, "So I'm the enemy?" "No, Sam, you're not the enemy. It's the circumstances." But you've got three things at play. You've got the builder that's trying to erect the building. You've got the, the local businessmen who are trying to make a living. And you've got the city that is trying to adhere to the plan as, you know, with flexibility. So it's a three-way balancing act and it's, it's, you know, not an easy thing to do. But, you know, I commend, you know, all of us for saying, "Yeah, we should have this every time." Because there's a lot of people who are affected by this. It's not just another piece of make-work. It's a piece of something that really is essential to the community, to the city, to the, to the builder. I'm gonna get the name wrong, I think, but David, is it? David, you know, when you were talking about how you designed the building and how it's, the character of the street is going to be changed, it resonated with me for kind of the opposite reason. My father built a territorial-style house. And you say, "Well, what's unusual about that?" Well, this was in southwestern Ohio and it was in the 1930s when he did it. And when I say he built it, he built everything except the stucco and had a little help with the, with one chimney. But he built it and, you know, lived there for, you know, decades. And then the neighborhood changed, so to speak, that houses were built after World War II. A lot of houses went up with a lot of asphalt and that rainwater had, couldn't soak into the asphalt and had to go someplace. So it was flooding. So the state looked around and said, "What are we gonna do? We need a water retention basin." And my father's house, house next door, nine acres and two houses, you know, let's go after that. Well, he stayed there as long as he could. He eventually sold out to a PR firm. And the PR firm promoted the building, got awards for architectural design and made a ton of money off the state when they condemned the building. Anyway, so yeah, those things happen. You know, I don't make light of it all. I can relate to it, not as well as you can or as my father could. But yeah, it's gonna change the neighborhood. But I still look at it and I say, "We're gonna have more parking." There may be problems with the parking, but we're going to have more parking. We're going to have more houses, more homes, I should say, more residences, which is a good thing for Scottsdale. Economically, I tend to look at things economically. I think it's, you know, it's a plus for the city. The traffic is de minimis. Yes, there's gonna be more traffic, but 83 units, it's not gonna be a ton of cars. But the big thing is, it looks good. It looks pretty. Okay, should the city get those, the dirt back on the corners? They haven't done anything with it. Maybe they couldn't afford to do it. Maybe it wasn't within the vision, whatever. The developer is going to do that. He's gonna make it look good. The buildings look good. The art will look good. The trees will look good. I'm not sure that I buy the idea about it being a barrier the way it is. You know, it's not like a, it's not like a wall, but still it will be more inviting because it's gonna look good. Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Gosh, now everyone wants to speak vice chair Young.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. So, Mr. Berry, thank you for the presentation and your whole team. I think this is a great project. We've had a lot of talk about the construction mitigation plan. And I read through staff stipulation and your proposed stipulation. I'm trying to understand what the difference is because they're asking for construction traffic routes, workforce vehicle parking, construction vehicle parking. And your plan shows where all that goes on the plan. So I, I'm just a little confused as to the difference between the two when they're asking for a plan and then you're providing a plan. So why? Why the change?
Chair Higgs, excuse me, Commissioner Young, I'm showing you the, the language of the two. The, the major difference was to try and get some specificity into the, into the stipulation, which seems to be something that staff is cautioning all of us about, is having too much specificity in there. So I think there's a balance in there. So you'll see, what we proposed was it has to be in substantial conformance with the plan submitted to city staff and dated February 17th, which is the one I put up there and that you have. And in such a plan, should be incorporated into the development plan, not the agreement, but the development plan specified in stipulation two. So it was an attempt to do that. I've got to tell you, and I just talked briefly with Mr. Pejman. But Commissioner, it seems like there may be a way to marry these concepts together. And maybe that's where you were headed. And maybe it's a way of providing kind of that list of things like Mr. Pejman had. Here's what, you know, we're not gonna cut off streets. We're not gonna take out parking. We're, you know, those types of things that we list them. And then maybe there's some kind of general conceptual exhibits that are attached to that. And, you know, Bob's initial reshaking has had, yes, if we can get that on camera, so I've got that forever, that he said, yes. So he, so I think there's, I think there's room to work here. And I think that's something that we're all kind of taking the admonition of staff pretty seriously about finding that balance. But staff has got a lot at, at stake. We've got a lot at stake. But I'm just gonna say, no one's got more at stake than these folks that have been there for so long and have small businesses. And I think Mr. Thompson said, you know, these small businesses are the reason that downtown is successful. We want to protect them. And we want to bring more business to them. So we're gonna work hard to balance all those competing interests. But I think Mr. Pejman may be on to something with kind of a list to kind of balance, marry some of these two concepts together. But depending on what the motion is, we will avert to you that we will have that ready for council.
Well, I, I was kind of flipping really quick when Mr. Pejman had his list up there. And it did look like everything that was on his list was actually included in this construction mitigation plan. So it sounds like if you're agreeing to be in substantial conformance with this plan that you provided, I mean, it's not done yet. And I think you've even admitted here on, on record that, you know, there still might be some things that need to be added to this or tweaked a little bit. So, you know, I, I, I think this kind of specificity is, is, is very good. And again, like some of the other commissioners have said, we've never really seen something like this come through with this kind of detail. So I, I, I think it's a good thing. You know, I'm, I'm in, I'm in support of the project and I'm okay with the step modification as it's read or as it's written there. So that, that's my own comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Higgs. While Commissioner Young, you pretty much took the wind out of my sail. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Young and the idea that I like the specificity here. In addition to that, the one other item I'd like to add is, I think the other concern that's being voiced here is the enforcement of this mitigation plan to ensure that these small businesses aren't adversely affected. So with this, Mr. Curtis, going into a development plan, what enforceability is there for the local business owners?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Scarborough, the, the role of enforcement is through the city manager and his or her staff at the time. We've got code enforcement and the zoning administrator. And because this will be a zoning action, it typically defaults back to the zoning administrator getting involved in any violations to the plan. And, and those are the, some of the variables that occur. You have crews out there, frankly, that probably don't care what the zoning step said back in 2022. And, and you've got a workforce that's out there. And so we just want to be crafty as we typically are during the final plan and pre-construction phase, where we're working with people that are actually going to be building the, the project. We're working with a, a finer scope and more clarity about what are the field conditions out there at the time of the construction, which we really don't have very clearly visualized today. And so those are some of the things that we, we want to be careful about because we could get in a situation where there's an expectation that we enforce precisely what was in a very specific construction mitigation plan from 2022. And, and therefore the, because there's some violation, the project is stopped while we work through amending the while we work through amending the plan through Planning Commission, City Council, which we know can take months. So those are some of the concerns, and that's probably why you haven't seen these this early in the in the process. And so what we're willing to do as we evolve, and we know downtown has more and more development proposals, and this is all infill. We need to really sharpen our pencils and and start working through this practice of 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 creating some at least preliminary commitments that can at least be relied on by the by the merchants who are going to be most affected, but also knowing that we don't necessarily want a situation where there's unreasonable expectations. And then when the project says is under construction, it's being held hostage over some 2022 mitigation plan. So those are the concerns, and I hate to throw cold water on this hot subject, but that's the reality that's out there, that we need to be real concerned. And and we're not going to be too excited, whoever the zoning administrator is, about stopping work because of demands that the mitigation plan isn't being followed. And it needs to be changed through the Planning Commission, City Council to amend that ordinance. Maybe a development agreement is easier to amend with with that idea, a development agreement as opposed to the development plan. But those are some of the things that we're trying to bounce around if we want to get commitments this early prior to construction. Thank you.
No, I completely understand. And I think what we're all sort of discussing here is a conceptual version of a mitigation, a construction mitigation plan. I I have heard Mr. Berry and other applicants and and other projects state, "Well, if we don't approve this project, something else will be built there." I would like to take Commissioner Graham and Serena's position a little bit stronger. And I think we need to figure out how we can develop this into the to the development code in general, to whether there's a conceptual construction mitigation plan for downtown projects that have to go even through the DRB. Now, I know that's not in the purview of this commission, but I'd like to have staff look at that. Because ultimately, if this property could be developed and doesn't have to go through commission, then somehow a conceptual construction mitigation plan needs to be reviewed and then finalized as you get closer to the implementation of the construction, even if it just goes through DRB. So I'm not sure what the path is to instigate that at the staff level, but I think that'd be something that that should be considered and considered soon. Other than that, I'm generally supportive. I think this is a great infill project. I appreciate the applicant providing such a detailed construction mitigation plan. So I'm generally supportive of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Thank you, Commissioner Higgs. Chair Higgs, I guess the one question I would like to know is, first of all, is it the south building that you're going to put the, is the 5,000 square foot commercial space that they're referring to?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez, yes.
And and is that going to include any retail? Or is that just take up all the office space or for the for the client? Or what what is it?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Gonzalez, we anticipate that there'll be at least 2,500 square feet that'll be used for the regional office. The other 2,500 square feet, again, these are all approximate. We're hoping that there might be some type of retail. We're hoping that it might be a restaurant with the outdoor patio and the public plaza. There would be a great location for that. We don't know whether it would be breakfast only or lunch, or we just don't know. We we're a little premature to go out to market with it.
Okay, that was the, that was the point that I was really going after is because the size of this project and the and the size of the project that's going across the street and everything like that, it's going to put a strain right now. It's hard. I used to work on First Avenue, and I can tell you, lunchtime is not the easiest time to get somewhere to have a decent lunch. You know, unless you want to walk up up the street or a couple of blocks north or south, I mean, east or west, or if you want to walk all the way up to Main or something like that. It's, it's not the easiest place to grab something to eat. And because you're having, you know, so many residents there that, you know, like mixed-use properties that we've seen, and we've, you know, looked at before. One of the things that's very integral part of the whole program is for these people to have somewhere to go eat. You know, you can't eat at Arcadia Farms every day. I don't, you know, even if you could afford it, I don't know if you'd want that menu every day. But the thing is, is that it's very important to have something for the people to to get, even though even some sort of a Sprouts Market Store like they have at the Highline Stores in Phoenix. You know, it's very important to have retail mixed in with this. I mean, it's just can't be all commercial offices. I'm sure there's lots of commercial space in that area. You know, we don't know what, you know, the Kimsey will actually finish out to be like. We don't know if there's going to be any, you know, services in there when they finally finish, whatever they're going to do. And Fifth and Fifth Avenue is not full of a lot of restaurants. There's Herb Box and a few things there. But all in all, it's not real conducive to a lunchtime type of a program. You know, you can only eat so many pizzas, you know, and stuff like that. So that was my main concern, and that is the one thing that I would like to see. Now is not the time to obviously ask for, because you don't know yourself. But we would like definitely see some sort of mixed-use combination put to forward to this so that the the people living there have something to look forward to. And actually, for the people who live in those, work in those offices and work in a few apartments and stuff, have something to do. So that's, that's my two cents on it.
Thank you.
Oh, gosh. All three of you. Commissioner Artel?
I noticed that Commissioner Gonzalez was working through the places to go for lunch, and he didn't mention Coach House. I was kind of surprised at that, but anyway. Commissioner Scarborough, I believe, mentioned enforcement. And Director Curtis talked about, well, we don't want to stop the project. And I'm thinking, no, we certainly wouldn't. What we want in enforcement is a way to keep things moving along. You know, somebody, I think it was Mr. Berry may have mentioned, well, the, maybe it was Commissioner Curtis or Director Curtis had said, "The crews that are out there working aren't going to care what was in the plan." So I'm, my question is, can enforcement be a police matter? You know, is this being a civil thing that's, you can only, you know, Mr. Pedgeman could only sue to get relief? You know, I would hope that, you know, you know, suing doesn't accomplish anything because the damage is done. Oh, this is a question for the attorney, I guess. What's an effective way to to get compliance? Not to penalize for non-compliance, but what's, how can we enforce to get compliance?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Artel, there's a number of things. First of all, I think we're overlooking, as I listened tonight. The city has a separate from the planners, a Development Services Group, staff full of engineers, transportation people. Before they can even put a bulldozer out there or a backhoe, they need a building permit to proceed. Those are based on stipulations. There's inspectors that go around that, you know, if they see a violation, they are in authority to either demand correction of the violation or they can shut down the job. So I think what Mr. Curtis is saying is that we don't want to have to shut down the job, but those people still certainly will if they're violating a thing. So typically, the city does not write them with what we'd call third-party enforcement ability because the city has its own enforcement ability. But they all know where to find City Hall or more more accurately, one civic center where all the inspection services is. So the the plan that would be come forth would would need flexibility to, but there's still, there's city, there's constant city oversight. I think the contractors and the developers will tell you that they don't just get a building permit. And the city comes back two years later and issues a certificate of occupancy. There's a lot of enforcement mechanisms. So what really what we need to do is maintain, and the and the group that has a lot of that responsibility hasn't been involved, and that's the concern as far as the the plan that Mr. Berry's worked on. I'm sure it's just a good start, but the group that actually does that really hasn't looked at that and weighed in. There's stipulations. The city also has designed standards and policies manual that dictates a lot of these things as far as building and sewers and all that stuff. So there's, there's a lot of processes that go on, so.
Okay, with that in mind, do we need, let me back up. Is the language of the applicant's proposed stipulation on this, is that adequate to capture what we've been talking about? Do we need a a quick rewrite of the, you know, the language of the motion so that we can accomplish what what we've talked about here tonight?
The, if if you want, from the legal perspective, the recommendation is is that it just be that the applicant continue to work with with staff to come up with a solution to propose to city council that has parameters that will have been reviewed and and kind of vetted through the city processes of not just the planners, but the other side of that, the development services. And then we have something that we can work and we can point to. We being, not me, but I often get consulted on these these issues as they arise. So that's what we're looking for, is to be able to have a document that we have goals or standards, but then maintains the flexibility that field conditions dictate sometimes. You know, we don't want something that says, "You absolutely can't do this," and that's going to create a safety hazard because we, they have to construct in a manner that because of a stipulation, and as Mr. Curtis pointed out, three years earlier, didn't account for the fact that there might be a water line where somebody didn't know, or there might be something underground. So that's the important thing, is the flexibility to make sure that we can maintain the order and safety and don't have to do something that creates a more, a bigger safety hazard.
I I understand. I was looking for some more concise language. I mean, I I was going to tape that, I guess, so that we could simply play that back as part of the motion. But does somebody feel capable of?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there's, I apologize, Commissioner Artel. I think there was language up there that was the option where this the stat would develop, create the development, or excuse me, the construction mitigation plan.
That was the first one, the first one?
I believe that was up there. Madam Chair, I'll, I'll take a stab at making a motion if you'd be, if you'd abolish me.
Sure.
Thank you. And I heard my name a couple of times, so I think I may have enough support for this motion, maybe. I I hope to. Oh, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Barney, Mr. Gonzalez? And I understand Mr. Curtis's sort of lack of alacrity in dealing with this type of language. So I want to recognize that. I would like to, Madam Chair, move to make a recommendation to city council for approval of case 3Z in 2021. Her staff recommended stipulations with the additional stipulation, including through reasonable efforts, a construction mitigation plan in developer's plan after determining that the proposed zoning district map amendment is consistent and conforms with the adopted general plan.
Second.
Yes, we have, we have a motion from Commissioner Graham. We have a second from, was that Commissioner Serena? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Hang on, I'm sorry. I'm a little confused by the motion. Sorry.
Restate the the motion like.
No, no, well, I, you know, I apologize if I didn't articulate or enunciate clearly, Vice Chair. I was just adding an additional stipulation that reasonable efforts are made to add a construction mitigation plan within the developer plan.
Perhaps staff could read back the the motion as it's recorded so we could see what we're.
Right, because and if I can just slightly expound on that, the the goal is not to straight, put a stray jacket on anyone. It's really more just to to equate or have comparable safeguards with protections.
That's where we want to go. The question is, is that what the language?
That, that was the intent of the motion, and I I suppose I would defer to Mr. Anderson if if he may think that I capture that in the language that I put forward for consideration by this commission.
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Graham, I think that accurately does. I I think there might have been one slip. I think you intended to refer to a development plan as where the construction mitigation would be part of the development plan that's that's proposed to council.
I thought that's what I said, but.
And I may have misheard you.
I may have missed.
Just make sure that's clear.
Okay, very good. Hope that dissuages the vice chair.
So we have a motion, we have a second, but was it clarified enough for others to vote?
Yeah, I I think so. I was just a little on the development plan. Yeah.
Construction mitigation. Okay, I think we're good for a roll call vote now.
Chair Higgs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Artel?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena?
Yes.
And Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
The motion passes six, one.